Tom is. I'm telling you.
Okay, good morning, everyone. I would like to call this Board of Commissioners meeting November 18th to order. If anyone would please raise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I would look for a motion to approve the reading of the minutes.
Motion.
Good.
And the question, all in favor? The opportunity for the public to address the board agenda items only.
No, we didn't get any agenda emails. We did receive two emails, but they're for later.
Okay, thank you. Ordinance, first reading. Two zero zero two one seven.
This is Commissioners, this is ordinance two six eight, the first reading of the annual budget for the County of Lackawanna for the year of 2021. First reading is today, November 18th, 2020. The second reading will be December 1st, 2020. The Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Community Affairs Harrisburg, Pennsylvania, annual budget for the County of Lackawanna for the year of 2020, ordinance two six eight. An ordinance in the County of Lackawanna and the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania fixing the tax rate and enacting the budget for the year 2021 and appropriate specific sums estimated to be required for the specific purposes of the county government here and after set forth during the current fiscal year. You ordained and enacted that it is hereby resolved and enacted by the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, Section 1 of the Tax B and the same is hereby levied on all property within the said county subject to taxation for county purposes for the fiscal year 2021 as follows. Tax rate for general county purposes, the sum of four six point nine zero mils of each dollar assessed valuation or the sum of 469 cents on each $100 of assessed valuation. For debt purposes, the sum of one three point two zero mils on each dollar assessed valuation or the sum of 132 cents on each $100 of assessed valuation. For the purposes of the county library system, the sum of 2.82 mils on each dollar of assessed valuation or the sum of 28.20 cents on each $100 of assessed valuation. For the purposes of the Cultural Education Fund, the sum of 1.0 mils or the sum of 10 cents on each $100 of assessed valuation. Total mileage for all purposes is the sum of 63.92 mils. Section 2, all prior ordinances or resolutions or parts thereof inconsistent herewith are repealed. This concludes the first reading of the budget for 2021.
Anyone have any questions?
No.
Thank you. Ordinance, first reading, two zero zero two three zero.
This is ordinance two six nine, the first reading of an intergovernmental cooperation agreement with the city of Scranton. The first reading is being held today, November 18th, 2020, and the second reading will be held December 2nd, 2020. An ordinance of the County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania authorizing entry into an intergovernmental cooperation agreement and memorandum of understanding with the city of Scranton for the collection of delinquent real estate taxes. The Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna do hereby ordain as follows, Section 1 recitals, 1.1, Section 2303 of the Pennsylvania General Local Government Code authorizes local governments such as Lackawanna County and the city of Scranton to jointly cooperate in the exercise or performance of their respective governmental functions, powers, or responsibilities, and enter into joint agreements as may be deemed appropriate to carry out those purposes following adoption of the authorizing ordinance in compliance with Section 2305 of the code, see 53 Pennsylvania CSA Sections 2302, 2303, and 2305. Section 1.2, Section 1.3 dash 302Q of Lackawanna County's Home Rule Charter empowers the Board of Commissioners to enter into governmental cooperation agreements following the adoption of an authorizing ordinance in compliance with Section 1.3 dash 309K of the county's Home Rule Charter, see 335 PA Code Sections 1.3 dash 302Q and 1.3 dash 309K. Section 2, Intergovernmental Cooperation, 2.1. The County, Lackawanna County Tax Claim Bureau is a division of the Office of the Lackawanna County Commissioners established pursuant to Section 5860.201 of the Pennsylvania Real Estate Tax Sale Law, C72PS, Section 5860.200201. Section 2.2, the statutory mandate of the Lackawanna County Tax Claim Bureau is the collection of delinquent real estate taxes on behalf of the taxing districts situated in Lackawanna County, see 72PS Sections 5860.201. Section 2.3, the city of Scranton is a Pennsylvania city of a home rule charter municipality and is authorized by the General Assembly to levy real estate taxes within its political boundaries, CPA CSA Sections 202901 dash 2984. Section 2.4, Lackawanna County Tax Claim Bureau and the city of Scranton seek to collaborate and to cooperate to jointly achieve the common goal and objective of collecting delinquent real estate taxes in a uniform, efficient, and effective manner. 2.5, the city of Scranton desires to appoint the Lackawanna County Tax Claim Bureau to collect its delinquent real estate taxes, and the Lackawanna County Tax Claim Bureau agrees to serve as the city of Scranton's agent in the collection of its delinquent real estate taxes. 2.6, Lackawanna County Tax Claim Bureau serve, shall serve as the exclusive agent of the city of Scranton and collect delinquent real estate taxes to return to it on behalf of the city of Scranton in accordance with the provisions of the Pennsylvania Real Estate Tax Laws, Tax Sale Law, 72PS Sections 5860.201, and the Pennsylvania Municipal Claim and Tax Lean Act, 53PS Sections 7101, as authorized by the Lackawanna County Ordinance Number 16 dash 0255. 2.7, the Intergovernmental Cooperation Agreement and Memorandum of Understanding attached hereto and incorporated in herein specifies the conditions of the agreement, duration of the agreement, the purpose and objectives of the agreement, including the powers and scope of the authority delegated, the manner and extent of financing the agreement, and the manner in which taxed delinquent property shall be acquired, managed, or disposed of, see Intergovernmental Cooperation Agreement and Memorandum of Understanding attached hereto as Appendix A generally. 2.8, Lackawanna County Commissioners do hereby approve the Intergovernmental Cooperation Agreement and Memorandum of Understanding with the city of Scranton as attached to this ordinance and authorize the Chairman of the Board of the County Commissioners to execute the same on behalf of Lackawanna County. Section 3, Effective Date. Section 3.1, this ordinance take effect 10 days following enactment. This concludes the first reading of ordinance two six nine.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Jeffers. Anyone, any questions? Okay. Resolutions, two zero zero two three five.
When the current payables date resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve the following payables, Lackawanna County's General Fund, numbers 311-782-312842, inclusive totaling $2,860,927.43. Electric fund transfers, including all payroll accounts totaling $7,530,929.74, adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on November 18th, 2020. Mr. Chairman.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Jeffers? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion.
And the question, all in favor? Aye. Thank you. Resolution two zero zero two three one.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, authorizing the filing of applications for local share account grants, authorizing the filing applications with the Monroe County Local Share Account Grant Program to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for various projects as detailed, whereas Lackawanna County is interested in promoting economic development and revitalization within Lackawanna County, and whereas Lackawanna County is submitting grant applications to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development through the Monroe County Local Share Grant Program on behalf of the various agencies as detailed. Number one, Jessup House Company, number two, $206,784 for building addition, paving, and drainage correction. Number two, Wretches of Foreign Wars Post 25 Theater Went Scranton, $278,5439, building expansion, kitchen installation, and ADA restroom. Number three, Connel Park Little League, $21,640, equipment for field maintenance. Number four, the Everheart Museum, $218,579 for rooftop HVAC replacement and window replacement. Number five, Hospice of the Sacred Heart, $55,730, facility furniture and equipment. Camp Freedom, the number six, Camp Freedom, $50,818 for recreation in the multi-purpose shooting range. Number seven, Jessup Ambulance, $50,000 for power stretcher and related equipment for emergency transport. Number eight, South Scranton Little League, $459,904 for field restoration, kitchen equipment, and field maintenance equipment. Number nine, the Ronald McDonald House, $103,700 for property acquisition and demolition for center expansion. Number 10, the Women's Resource Center, $300,000 for crisis counseling center expansion. Number 11, Wretches of Foreign Wars Post 7069 Clark Summit, $44,348 for roof repair and building restorations. Number 12, Dive Rescue Specialists Incorporated, $300,000, construction of a garage and operations building for multi-county emergency response dive teams. Number 13, American Legion 328 Ambrose Revels Archbolt, $43,830 for roof restoration project. And number 14, Lackawanna County Health and Human Services Advisory Board, $25,000 gap funding for the ECHO project, I guess it'd be Echo Project, Senior Housing Initiative. Whereas Lackawanna County hereby authorizes the Chairman of the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners to sign and authorize all documents and accept any awards related to these Monroe County Local Share Accounts Grants, and now therefore be it resolved this 18th day of November 2020 that the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners does hereby authorize the submission of these applications to the Monroe County Local Share Account Grant Program on behalf of the above named entities and their respective projects. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on November 18th, 2020, Commissioners here to speak on that is our Economic Development Director, Brenda Sacco.
Morning, everyone.
Morning, Brenda.
This resolution is authorizing the submission of the Monroe County Local Share Account Grant Program applications to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development. It is on behalf of 14 agencies, and it's totaling over $2 million in requests. The LSA grant program continues to provide support and enhance community and economic well-being for communities important projects across Lackawanna County. Does anyone have any questions?
No, no questions, and I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
And the question, all in favor? Aye. Thank you, thanks, Brenda.
You have a good day.
Thank you.
Resolution two zero zero two three two.
Entering into a contract addendum, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby enter into a contract addendum with Info Matrix for the Office of Youth and Family Services, services not to exceed $400,000 for current contract period of July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2021. Adopted at regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on November 18th, 2020. Here to speak on this, Commissioners, is Director Bill Browning.
Good, Bill.
Morning, Commissioners. This is for development of an interface with our case management system with the previously approved Nexus application, which will increase efficiency and accountability as well as quality assurance within our, within the Office of Youth and Family Services.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Browning?
Nope.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to approve.
Make a motion.
Second, Deb. On the, Deb. Entertain a motion, Chris, Chris made the motion.
Oh, second, sorry.
That's okay.
I could barely hear you guys on this, I don't know what's going on.
All right, on the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Okay. Resolution two zero zero two three four.
Ratifying agreement with the Bucks County Youth Center, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve and ratify the service agreement for housing juveniles with Bucks County Youth Center, term to begin immediately and expire June 30th, 2021, adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on November 18th, 2020. Commissioners, also speaking on this is Director Browning.
Thank you. This is in response to our need to find secure facilities for youth that are requiring a detention placement because of COVID and other issues. All of our existing contracted providers were unable to accommodate us, so this is an expansion of that network.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Browning?
Nope.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
And the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thanks, Mr. Browning. Resolution two zero zero two three three.
Amendments to the Lackawanna County Land Bank Board of Directors, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby appoint the following individual to the Lackawanna County Land Bank Board of Directors, Mary Jo Sheridan, City of Scranton Treasurer, appointment by the Mayor of the City of Scranton to fill the unexpired term of Wayne Beck, five-year term to commence immediately and expire on 12/31/2020. And be it further resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby amend the term of the following as per the ordinance, Al Chelick, 703 Plank Road, Meafield, Pennsylvania, 18433, term to begin immediately and expire on December 31st, 2023. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on November 18th, 2020. Commissioners here to speak on that is Ms. Hart.
So, we received a letter from the Mayor of the City of Scranton regarding the appointment to Mary Jo, of Mary Jo Sheridan to the Land Bank Board. Mary Jo is filling the unexpired term of Wayne Beck, who is filling the unexpired term of Linda Abley. Now, we appointed Linda Abley to the land bank when we established the land bank back in 2015. So, if you look back at the ordinance when we established it in 2015, and subsequently in the resolution in October of 2015, the term ends December 31st of 2012. So, in the mayor's letter to us, she's requesting that the term expire in 2024. We would just need another letter from the mayor's office asking for Mary Jo to be reappointed come January, since the term is, is still an active term right now.
Okay. Anyone have any questions for Ms. Hart on that? No. Okay, and the Al Chelick appointment?
That was, I was fixing the term on that myself because I didn't properly read the ordinance a couple of years ago. The original term was three years, and when we put Al Chelick in, it should have been a five-year term, as per the ordinance.
Anyone have any other questions?
Nope.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
The question, all in favor? Aye. Thank you all. Opportunity for the public to address the board. Ms. Hart.
Okay, the first one is from Michael and Clark Screamin. He said, hello, I would like to address the mail-in ballots. Can you publish a list of all of the names and addresses of everyone in the county that received mail-in ballots? How many ballots were sent out and how many ballots were returned? I have heard of many instances where people and households received multiple mail-in ballots. Do you have any checks in place to verify someone did not send back multiple ballots and they were counted twice? Also, if someone received a mail-in ballot and showed up at the polls to vote, were they allowed to vote if they did not surrender their ballot at the poll?
We'll have to go through those one at a time, but here to answer those questions is the Solicitor for the Bureau of Election, Don Frederickson, and the short answer is yes, we, we do have checks and balances in place, but Don will explain further.
Great, thank you, Commissioner, that's correct. We do have checks and balances in place to make sure nobody votes twice. To answer his first question about a list of individuals who received and voted by mail-in ballot, the list is available. You have to file a write-to-know request through the election, through the county, and we can provide that. There may be a charge because it's an extensive list. There were over, there's almost 50,000 mail-in ballot applications received, and 40, 42,000 plus were received back and processed through the Election Bureau. Now, to answer his question about multiple ballots, multiple ballots are not sent out, I think is what he's referring to, our applications. Applications for mail-in ballots were being sent out by the different parties, the different campaigns, to people. I received multiple applications myself in the mail. The applications, the individual would have to take one of those applications and then apply for a ballot, and only one ballot would be sent out, because once we receive an application, their name is checked in the registry book, and if they send in a second one, that would be discarded. You're only going to get one mail-in ballot, so that there were not multiple mail-in ballots sent out. I think he's confusing that with applications for a ballot. And if a voter received a mail-in ballot and decided to go to the polls instead, they would require to surrender their ballot. If they surrendered the ballot at the poll, they would be given a machine ballot and they would vote on the machine. Now, if they went to the polls and said they received the mail-in ballot but lost it or didn't have it, they would then be allowed to vote provisionally, to be given a provisional ballot. And the check on that is, after the election is over, the provisional ballots are canvassed after everything else is processed. It took us about a week to canvass them because we have over 2,000 we received this, this election period. The name is checked. If we, if it's checked, then we received your ballot, your mail-in ballot, the provisional ballot would be discarded and not counted. If we did not receive your mail-in ballot, then your provisional ballot was opened and counted in the election. So, there is a check on that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
What else do you have, Ms. Hart?
Okay, the next one's from John Moran, no address. Dear Commissioners, in the past week, a number of databases that were available online on the Lackawanna County website have been blocked. These databases were a valuable tool in conducting genealogical research and also important to library, newspapers, historical societies, and many others. The county, along with an outside vendor, will be charging a fee to access the data. The fee mentioned is 50 cents per minute, which is $30 per hour. As a genealogy researcher, I use the database frequently, and many times my searches will go over an hour at a time. It has been a great asset in my work, but I no longer will be able to utilize the database due to the prohibitive costs. I believe these databases were created with taxpayer funds, so I don't understand why there would be fees charged to the residents of Lackawanna County. These databases have been online for quite a while without any problems, and I question the purposes of an outside vendor profiting from our databases and using the county website to sell their services. Even if the county receives some compensation for allowing this to occur, it is not right that residents are being charged to view the site. If this procedure is allowed to continue, then I would remind the Commissioners that they will have to make provisions for people to visit the county building and spend sometimes hours in their research. Also, given the number of researchers, I suggest that appointments and space allocation to visit the building be made for groups that wish to search the public database. Also, in order to avoid this fee, please provide the contact person who can receive and respond to our written requests or emails or information from the public database. Finally, I feel this was a poor decision made to allow the fees to be charged to target the segment of the residents of Lackawanna County. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Anyone have a response to that?
Oh, Mr. Chairman, real quick, I would say that, you know, the contact person would be the Register of Wills and, 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 well, I guess the, the contact person would be those individuals that are looking for a specified file for that department. So, if they're looking for the clerk's judicial records, they need to talk to Marty Kelly. If they're looking for the orphans or the register of wills, they need to talk to Frank Kowalski. This is something that the row offices can explain and further to them if they, if they feel as though they want to, and, and we will forward this email to the row offices, and they can explain this to, I'm sorry, his name was Mr. Moran, John Moran, in further detail. They were, they approached us because their fund was out of money, and this is their, their solution to this problem. The Commissioners on behalf of the row offices passed this contract that we went through with Frank and everyone else. This is what they wanted to do, and the Commissioners passed it for them.
Commissioners, I was just pointing out that in the negotiation of this contract, in order to make that Crick Fund solvent again, which is the fund that Brian is referencing, the initial discussions in the typical rate charged most other counties is a, is a $25 initiation fee and a $1.10 per minute. We were able to negotiate that down to $25 user fee, $1 a month, and a 50 cent a minute rate. So, it was a considerable savings in relation to other counties across the Commonwealth.
This is common practice?
Yes, yes, Commissioner, it is a common practice, and for those counties that have not done it yet, it's just a matter of time until they get on board, because that is the wave of the future, and with technology, they need to be able to fund these apps, and more so the scanning of all of the documents, the millions of pages of documents that have to go into these systems to create these electronic portals that Mr. Moran is referencing that, that the public is allowed to view. I would also add that we are discussing with the row offices as well, going forward, once we work through the pandemic issues of establishing protocol within the government center going forward to allow some public access to those, to some terminals or to those documents.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or from the public, Ms. Hart?
No, that's it.
Okay. Commissioners, other business? Mr. Schirmack?
Telling everybody just to stay safe and enjoy your Thanksgiving, so.
And that's the truth. Okay.
There's a, just a reminder of the blood drive, that is, I mentioned at the time of the last board meeting, the day after Thanksgiving, so if everyone would get out and donate, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you. Anything else?
Commissioner, if you, if you don't mind, there has been a press release by the state. We were aware this was coming, and they released it a little while ago. The Department of Health contacted the Commissioners last Tuesday on November 10th about putting in a testing site in Lackawanna County. We were all at the, the Wounded Warrior Project that, when that call came in and returned to the office here, and got on the phone with the Department of Health, and they're testing people, and they gave us, you know, the project to take care of, getting, securing a site and doing all logistics, to which we assigned that to our 911 Director, David Hawn. He went out and secured a site within 72 hours, and with that, held a meeting at the 911 Center on Monday with the Dixon City Police Department and their rural manager, our Sheriff's Department, Pennsylvania State Police, PENDOT, and the AMI testing firm that has been contracted by the state. The state has now sent forth a press release stating the dates and the times when this is going to happen. This is going to happen starting this Saturday, Sunday, and Monday, and Tuesday, for four days straight, from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. at the old Kmart parking lot on top of Dixon City Hill. Dixon City Police will have and be in charge of the traffic control as well as PENDOT with their mobile messaging signs. Our sheriffs will be in charge of security up on top. The testing program, and the testing program is run by AMI Health. They were contracted to do 440 tests per day. That's not 440 vehicles, but it's a 440 test, so if they hit their 440 mark per day during this, any time of these four days, they will stop the testing at that moment in time, so it could stop at 1:00 p.m., it could, it could go all the way to 6:00 p.m. They believe that the first two days will be the busiest and the second two days will be the slowest, obviously. And we're asking people to pay attention to the PENDOT mobile messaging signs that are going to be on either side of the road, there's going to be four of them. Be patient, please. They can come and use their insurance cards and produce an ID, however, if their insurance is not taken, the tests are free. This will be a drive-in, up to the top, our 911 Center has their mobile command center up top there, plus a town hospital tent that the administration will be working out of the AMI administration. We encourage everyone to, to go to this, and we will have further details and talk to the media within the hour.
I think the most important part of this is those are only 440 tests per day given.
That's what the state contracted with this company to do, so it is four days, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, and Tuesday coming up, that's the 21st, 22nd, 23rd, and 24th. But you are correct, sir, once they hit the 440th test, they will shut down the site and then start up again the next day.
I have no control over that, that's just the way it is.
That's what they've been doing with all these test sites throughout the, the state. These four-day test sites, they've contracted, they are right now in Serra and Bradford County, and they are doing 440 tests per day up there also.
Okay, as far as the turnaround time, you were told that 24 to 48 hours for negative test, or for positive tests. or for positive tests, which would come first.
Right, and I, and I would say, Commissioner, that we should really say about 24 to 72 hours. They said 24 to 48. However, they have to get those tests out to Pittsburgh to their lab, so we may want to give them a day, just so people don't think that, you know, if they tested and they're good after two days, they're good to go. I would say it's 24 to 72. Those who are negative, you are correct, will get a, an email, I believe they said, correct?
Yep, yep. The positives will be first, so.
Yeah, and Commissioner Schirmack was in attendance with that meeting on Monday, as well as Chief Belinski and Sergeant Oakley. Manager Ches Fraconi was there also, Captain Gatauski from the State Police was there, PennDOT was there, Jonathan Ibeble was there with the PennDOT. It was a well-organized meeting that Dave Hahn and the EMS people put together on a very short period of time, and a representative of AMI was there also. They gave us what they needed, and everybody that was there in conjunction worked to make sure that they had everything they needed, and they all went up to view the site and tour it after the meeting concluded about an hour later.
Anything else? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second, okay, on the question, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you all.
Thank you.
Yeah.